You ready Connie? We're going to call this meeting to order if I could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you all, you may be seated. Okay, next item is adoption of the agenda. Is there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Take off the vacating alley.
No, that alley vacation's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's not on that, you're good.
Got alleys on the brain.
Is there a motion to your motion? Motion, okay. Motion by Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, alright. Moving on, presentations of minutes for your approval. You have several sets of minutes in here, so we'll start, you've got August the first, the 25th, the 3rd, 4th of September, September 10th and September 24th. A lot of those are your special meetings and your workshops and stuff. Any questions, corrections, changes on any of those sets of minutes?
I have a couple minor corrections. On the August 25th minutes in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6th paragraph.
On the first page.
On the first page, I'm sorry, yes. And I don't know, you recite here the mayor's report that he gave, his comment on the wheel tax, and I don't know if you took this directly out of the report. And the report was in error, but the last sentence in that paragraph says the county would receive between 190 million and 255 million, I believe that should be state, I don't think the counties.
No.
I wish they were.
Yeah, wouldn't that be great?
You see what I'm talking about Connie?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And again, I don't know if that was in the original, I didn't go back and check the original.
We'll go back and verify our number, the amount.
The only other minute that I found a small mistake in were the September 10th minutes, the very last statement on adjournment. Motion carried 5-0, there were only four of us present. That's all, that's all I've got.
So council, is there any other changes or corrections to those minutes? Is there a motion to approve all those minutes as presented and with those correct?
With those correct.
And the September 10th meeting was not there.
At the top of the sheet.
It says President Mayor Hale, Councilman Larry Kleeman, Brian Steen, Gerald Gately, Philip Simpson and Mike Finley. That's everyone. Absent was the attorney.
Yeah, it might have been.
Yeah, it was Gerald.
It's my fault, I don't count.
If you're talking to September 10th.
Yeah.
Now I'd have to go back and look at our notes or look at the YouTube video to make sure who was there. Because I, with all these minutes, meetings, I can't remember.
Okay. I know, I know what happened. If you look under the adoption of the agenda.
Oh.
It carried 4-0 because Philip didn't arrive until after the minutes were.
Approved.
Okay, so, so your, your last statement is correct, right? Apologize for that.
Thanks.
Well, me, it was you.
Alright, with that clarity, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Mike, second by Philip, any further discussion? All in favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is approval of accounts payable vouchers.
They are going around for the council members to sign them, just needing approval on the accounts payable vouchers this time for the month of September.
I have a mirror.
Yeah, I just.
If you want to sign them, or you can wait after, whatever you want to do, I'll pass them down.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Philip, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, any further discussion? All of us in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is comments of citizens. If there are any citizens that have any comments for something that's not on the agenda. So, we're going to have a public hearing in a minute here, and that's, I think some of you here are probably related to more of the animal funding. You're welcome to make those comments during that time, that's when actually we talk about that funding side of it. And I'd recommend it then, because we've got some information we want to share with you guys that might help the situation prior to comments and stuff, and might calm the waters drastically. All to go, all, hopefully, but. So if there's anything other than, that's not budget related, we'll say, that you'd like to make a comment on? Okay. Move on to the public hearing side then. We need a motion to suspend the meeting for the public hearing side for the 2026 budget, so is there a motion to suspend? Motion by Brian.
Second.
Second by Gerald, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Meeting is temporarily suspended, so now is a public hearing for the 2026 budget. Counsel, we can have some discussion on it and make changes to it still at this point, you know, if you want. During the public hearing side of it, you can't actually make like a motion, we'll say, but you can make some recommendations and stuff that Connie can work on. If in the budget, is there anything specific that the council wants to discuss? I've got one thing I know, but, anything before that shelter part?
I.
Please go ahead if you have something, this is your time.
I have some questions, comments, suggestions. I went through the budget sheets again today to see what else we could cut to free up money for either the animal shelter or other activities that were needed. And these are only suggestions and are questions, I don't know, some of them may not even be feasible, but on page seven, I don't know if you brought your budget book or not. Under city council, we have $2,000 budgeted for travel. And I would be okay with eliminating that. Not budgeting anything for council travel. Which would free up $2,000.
Is that what pays us our mileage?
Pays your mileage, and if you go to a conference for training, it would come out of that too.
We already reduced that by $1,000 from.
Yeah.
Or from the current year. So, anyway, suggestion, I've not, let me just throw these out.
Keep going up, Connie and I've worked up some too, so.
Okay, okay.
Was that page seven Larry?
Yes.
It is, yes, I'm sorry.
Is this the new one or the old one?
That's the new.
This is the new one.
So he's wanting to cut?
He's wanting to cut this $2,000 out.
Travel expense.
Travel expense, yes.
Just a suggestion.
Okay.
Page 32. And I can't remember, but page 32 is park and recreation, and we've got 15,000 budgeted for park improvements. And I can't recall, I had a notation, I circled that and had a notation. Did we move that to cumulative capital development?
Yes.
So we've already cut that.
You've already cut that, you already cut that out of your own meeting.
Okay, great. I, I circled it, but I didn't write what we had done. Okay, thank you. Okay, next one is on page 38 on cumulative capital developments. I think that was just a clarification that we moved that 15,000 to, from park and recs to that. So I don't have any additional comments on that. Okay, page 43. The motor vehicle highway fund. We are currently paying $234,100 for our street department labor salaries out of this fund.
Correct. And for the summer help too.
And for the summer help.
And that's six months of the regular employees. Six months of their salaries being paid out of the general fund, and six months is being paid out of the high, the motor vehicle highway fund.
Okay.
And then the summer kids, we just pay all out of the motor highway, motor vehicle highway fund.
And we have 120,000 budgeted for street and alley maintenance, is that correct?
For next year, yes.
For next year, correct. Could we move that 120,000 out of street and alley maintenance? Zero that out and move that into salaries and pay more of the street department's salaries out of MBH, which would free up some money in the street department general fund budget.
That's up to the council.
Now we, we cut 90 out of the general fund, right?
Yeah.
For paving.
For paving.
For paving.
Well, we cut more than that, we cut it from 100.
50,000.
Yeah, down to 10,000.
150 to 10, yeah.
Yeah.
And this can, out of motor vehicle highway, that can be used for paving.
But what?
Street maintenance, whatever.
Yeah, I, I understand.
But that makes, helps make up the shortfall at the other end that we took away. Right?
It basically zeros us out on street and alley maintenance funds, if, if we do what I'm suggesting.
Because you would want to take that 120,000 off of the salaries in general fund and put it somewhere else within the general fund.
Or, or just reduce it.
Towards the operating balance.
Yeah, towards the operating balance, yeah. I'm looking at trying to create some funds so that we can do some other things. It's an option.
Hmm?
It's an option, because I will remind this council, we do have an option available to us to create funds for paving.
Not for next year. You're after that weekend.
You're after.
I understand that Gerald. Understand that. Page 45. This is $75,000 for local road and street. Is that, is that money, that, that's not general fund money, that's money designated for local road and street?
Correct, that is money that we receive on a monthly basis from the auditor, from the state auditor's office.
Okay.
Based on the gasoline tax.
It has to be used on paving, or can?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Then there's nothing we can do with that. Okay. The only, and I didn't get into figures, but I've had suggested to me, I think I may have even mentioned this at our last budget meeting, about not opening the pool as an option to save money. I've had suggested to me that instead of not opening the pool entirely, maybe we only open it for a month this summer to save money. I don't know how feasible that is, I don't know whether I support that or not, I'm just saying that has been mentioned to me as a possible alternative. Some other things that I thought of, and again, I don't have numbers on this, I'm not sure how much money potentially it would create, but if we discontinued curbside recycling, would that save us money?
Potential. I mean, we'd start to labor from it.
Correct.
Other than reducing those employees' hours or trains from, to do something else, it, it wouldn't. I mean, we're paying them already for that job.
If they're not doing.
That, what are they doing?
Right, and that is coming out of the trash fund, which is a separate fund from your general, so if they're not doing anything related to trash, then they're going to have to be transferred over and be city, be paid out of the general fund. So it's going to add more to your general fund.
Which we don't have.
Is what I'm, am I making that through right? I feel like I am, so.
Okay, those are the.
See, we, we were mandated by the state to cut our trash consumption back in '92 or '93.
Aye.
About 50 percent.
Aye.
So if, if we quit recycling, that's going to put more trash into the trucks, which means more trips to over there. So, I'm just pointing it out there, for the folks who don't understand, it's called an unfunded mandate. They said, here it is, fix it. But by the way, we ain't giving you no money. So that's why you have a solid waste fee. So anyway, I, I'm not in favor of quitting recycling, goes.
I, I didn't say I was in favor of it.
I know, I'm just.
I'm, I'm just saying, I.
You're, I know, you're throwing stuff out there, I understand that.
I've looked through these budgets time and time and time again, and I mean, there are only so many places.
And we understand why we're short, we all know that.
Yes, yes. Okay, that's it.
And we could, we could have a little more money, but that's another total issue.
Okay. Any other comments from the council, and I'll, if not, I can go into some of the suggestions that Connie and I have looked up and figured that might be another solution as well. Okay. So, after our last meeting, Connie and I have met, talked off and on, and done stuff on our own, and done stuff together, but we've kind of come to a conclusion of some different cuts, some, I'm going to call them simpler cuts, but to take from one to give to another, you're going to, you're, you're going to cut this, cut that, so I just want to share that with you. The simplest, cleanest way that we could do some of these cuts to come up with it is kind of cutting it from one source that can be spent anywhere, basically, it doesn't have a lot of strings tied to it. And that's the riverboat funds. We don't receive a whole lot of that, but we've often used them to pay for donations to the, well, in the past, actually, it was the shelter was funded out of that at one point.
That's page 52.
And that's page 52, if you want to look at your books, but Connie and I've come up with regional arts, cutting them altogether. They used to receive 3,000, we moved it to 1,000 and now cut 1,000. The Telsi Historical Society also received 3,000, cutting them to 1,000, or excuse me, reducing them to zero. So zero regional arts, zero the historical society. The elections, so when the city has a municipal election, the city's responsible for paying for that election, right? If you have a primary and a general, the city pays, the tax dollars from the city pays for that, not county. Now, if there's a countywide election, it's covered through the county tax. We've always paid for our elections out of the riverboat funds, and an election will cost you, depends off if you have a primary or a general, 20,000 on up. Believe it or not, that's how much an election costs.
Yeah.
Nobody believes that, but it really does cost that much. So, we've always budgeted maybe 5 or 10,000 or so out of that riverboat money to put back to pay for it. Makes sense, put a little back in savings. So I think 10 is what's budgeted, we, we was going to reduce it to five, is that right?
No.
But we had five, cut zero.
No, we had 15 and we're cutting it by five.
Okay, 15, cutting it by five.
Hold 10 in there.
Okay, so that is still 10, thank you. And then the phone system, Connie and I have been working on some ideas to do a lot of changing on our phones in the city, reducing the number of telephone lines, and this is something we've been trying to work on for quite a while now. But also looking over voiceover IP kind of a thing and different options out there, so. The phone systems are crazy, but we did have some money to budget for it, so we decided to reduce 9,500. So that's $16,500 at a riverboat that we could use to put towards some things.
Do the phone again, you're.
9,500.
So 25 to?
To reduce it 9,500.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
Reduce the phone down to one.
Well, it's got to reduce, it's just, yeah, minus 9,500, so 16,500. Connie and I had some discussions with Steve Parker and the Parks and Rec. The restrooms in Hagerdham Park, he was wanting to try to redo those, and we've kind of done some different things that we made, you know, obviously, it won't be exactly what we want, but it will still get the job done, you know, maybe replacing some of the doors, different things like that. Because the doors now, it looks like somebody beat them with a baseball bat, I mean, they're.
Probably literally did.
Yeah, they probably literally did, but they're pretty beat up and pretty rough.
Are you in Parks and Rec or still in Riverboat?
Well, I'm at a Parks and, I'm at a riverboat, I'm actually in Kew Cap Development where I was going with this, so.
Okay.
We were going to budget.
Page 38, if they.
We were going to budget under Kew Cap Development to redo those restrooms. And we've come up with 21,500 to reduce that by, from 40 or 50 or something.
45,000, we'd be cutting it half.
When you take the 16,500 from the riverboat, 21,500 from the Kew Cap Development.
The 10 that they had already.
And the 10 that they got.
That we had already.
That should come up with the, see the riverboat 16,500. Connie, Kew Cap Development, you had 31,500 in there.
Well, that's because.
Oh, the 10.
The 10 was already approved in their, their budget.
Right, so that comes up with the whole 48,000.
So that comes up to the whole 48, 48,000 that they're currently receiving.
That we, that we put in, yeah, for next year's budget. So, we just, I know Larry's got some good suggestions with the motor vehicle highway and the travel. Only problem with those is some moving around, the motor vehicle highway would require a little bit more moving around on Connie's part than just reducing them. She adds a 0.1 ounce movement of height.
Yeah, and I'm not sure you'd be able to. Well, you couldn't pay animal shelter out of.
No, you'd have to pay it out of general.
Highway, you can pay it out of the general. So it would just be reducing the, the salaries down by that amount and then putting a line item back in for whatever amount they wanted to, if they wanted to put animal shelter in the general fund.
Now, one easy thing the council could do is leave regional arts at 1,000 and historical society at 1,000, right? And then just reduce their travel budget to, from 2,000 to zero, that wouldn't be a problem, would it Connie?
No, that I, no.
Do you have, do you have money in the budget for me to travel, because I travel once a year and I will absolutely forego my mileage reimbursement?
We have a little bit in there for you.
I hear.
Cut it out.
Not much.
Hey, not much, I'll, I'll give, I'll give my not much.
We don't hardly pay you. Yes anyways.
We have $800 in there.
You can buy 800 more and we can give it to regional arts or historical society, I'd do it. I'll, I'll stay under it.
We went over it this year, so.
I'll stay under it, and hey, if there's something I need reimbursed for, I'll come to the council at that time and ask for a special appropriation if it's appropriate, but.
Okay.
Take my 800.
So those are a few suggestions, I had a few other ones as well, but I think mine were a little more complicated and moving stuff around, I was. Obviously Connie and I are on the same page in elections, I was reducing some of the, the tires and stuff, replacement on some of the vehicles.
What's the total you save so far?
Well, we, by making these, if we would make these changes, we would come up with the 48,000 to put in like we have. Now, you could take the two Larry said and, and keep a little money for the regional arts and historical society. You know, I'm part of the historical society, so I, we'll be fine, well, I don't want to speak for them, they'll all be mad at me, that's okay, but we'll make it work. We've made do before, we'll make do with that again, but. Regional arts, I can't speak for them, I mean, they've got a big capital project they're trying to do, and that benefits a lot of people, too. So, you know, you guys decide. I think the elections and the phone system and the park renovations are your three easiest no brainers. It's just, how do you want to do the museum, regional arts, and then council travel and any Jeff's travel he said. So, those are your smaller amounts.
I'm concerned about the park renovations on the restrooms.
Steve feels comfortable, we can make it work. Steve, do you feel, I mean, I'll let him speak, because he and I, he shared with him.
I'm working with a couple of companies now to cut everything down, make, make it work, get heating in there for the winter. Get a new roof, replace the doors.
Every year round.
I'm, I'm working on it. I'm, don't hope it's done yet, but we're working on it.
We might at least provide heat in there, not air necessary, but heat, I've given some suggestions that I've seen done, that's pretty inexpensive to fry the heat in there, and they would lock, like they do the Shergens, Shergens, Joe Schaefer Park as well at night, since. Believe it or not, there are people playing pickleball and some tennis and what have you, basketball in the winter. You could have a very mild February, and, yeah. That is my, some of my suggestions.
I'm going to go back, I, I need to apologize for when Larry was talking about the motor vehicle highway and moving 120,000 to those salaries within that budget and then reducing the general budget. You can reduce that general budget by 120, then you would have to put that somewhere else within that bud, in the general budget. It just can't go into our overall, because of our total estimated budget for next year is 5,300,306, and it has to stay at that amount. That is what I put on the form, that is what my Form 3 shows, which is my notice to taxpayers. So that number cannot be made any higher and it cannot be any lower, it has to stay at that amount. But you can switch within the general fund.
And what is our projected general fund balance as to end of next year? That don't have much to work on our.
Right, now, the way I have it set up, it would be 100, our end of the year operating balance in 2026 would be 144,000.
Boy, that's close.
So for the folks, that 144,000 is a cushion, like if we need the additional appropriation. The last meeting we was at, it was 106, wasn't it?
Yes, yes.
So we went up a little. That, that sounds like a lot, but boy, it's something for us, it don't, it takes.
Yeah.
But, you know, and, it's unreal, I mean, we're, we're short in the general fund. And I've got to be careful here, I guess, Jeff, but. We know why we're short, that's an ongoing discussion with the county, we're trying to recoup that money. So, believe me, there's, there's no fat in this budget. I mean, you can see what we're cutting. It, it's just not there, folks. I wish it was. Once you make these cuts and then next year, the next two years projected out, don't look good either. Right, Mayor? Especially 28, it. The Senate Bill 1 is, is going to hammer Towns, ours eyes, Hamilton, Troy, I mean, it, it just.
Sitting in the larger communities, this is bad all, all over the state, everywhere. But, I mean, I hope, you know, I think everybody would agree having a reduction in taxes, hold your comments around, please. It's great, nobody wants to pay a lot in taxes, I mean, nobody just jumps up and down and says, hey, I'm going to give as much as I can, I mean, most people would, let's put it that way. But when they start making cuts like that, you're going to see cuts to services. I mean, you, you are, it's just, I mean, there's a lot of services we rely on today that may not be here in the next couple of years for that reason. You may see less employees in government, you know, and may have to, may take longer to get something done that may have gotten done sooner, not just locally, but on a state level even. I mean, it's, it's inevitable, it's what's going to have to happen. But I think the council's doing the best they can to try to fund everybody at the best they can, it may not be to what everybody wishes and wants, but I think they're definitely doing the best they can. Even as more cuts come in the future, I mean, we'll just have to wait and see. So, so council, real quick, what, that's, I mean, obviously, we don't make a motion, because this is the public hearing side, I'm allowed the public time to come up here and speak in just a second. But before they do, I want you guys to have some answers, so then it might change what you say and how you go about it, because I think it would, so. Let's just talk riverboat, the easy one is 5,000 in riverboat worth reducing, to kind of get an idea, consensus that that, that would be a, Connie, I feel that we would be fine.
The election provision in riverboat.
How much money do we have in, do you know how much money we have in the election today, or the next general election for us?
Probably about 15,000.
So we've.
Been doing this for several years.
Yeah. We always take.
We started out at five, so.
We'll be able to put maybe another little bit in next year and then be closer, and it all depends on if there's a primary or not.
Right.
Cromer, yeah, that's a big money.
It depends on how big a primary, if it's a citywide primary, it costs more, if it's just one ward or particular. Then it depends on how big a primary. If it's a citywide primary, it costs more. If it's just one ward or particular area, then it's a little bit less because there's only one or so polling place, but not off less. So we feel five can be a good, a good cut and a good use for it to move that around. And the phone system at ninety-five hundred, Connie and I, we've got some, we feel we have some good ideas. Now, will it all work? We'll find out. But I feel there's a lot of cuts in our phones that we could make. It's just gonna take us, Connie and I, a day or so or two to sit down and go over it. Believe it or not, it's more complicated than you think when you have a lot of phone lines and how they work. And doing some of them over the internet versus over an actual landline itself could save a lot of money. But there's also the whole hardware behind the phone system that's...
That's the hardware.
Believe, expensive. So, so ninety-five hundred there. And then the two thousand, you could either take it from the council's part or take it from the regional arts museum. Your, your choice there, but either way you do that. And the twenty-one from the parks part, you get your, and their ten that you're getting for the shelter gives them the forty-eight that was originally put in there.
Do we know how much the county's funding them?
I don't.
Does any of you folks know? Haven't seen their budget.
They're, they're not totally completed. It was supposed to be done today, but the total, that's...
They don't have it ready yet, Jim?
Huh?
They don't have it ready yet?
Well, they're in, they have it ready, but I think they're gonna have a, they're gonna have another meeting, but don't owe that to me. I'm just hearing this.
Okay.
How much?
Sixty? What'd he say?
Sixty.
Sixty.
But I was, I was told, I was told, and I, I won't say by whom, but it was a person that's involved in animal welfare, that the county is using their restrictive fund for that building to fund the animal shelter. They're not using, they're not taking it out of their general fund. Is that correct?
That's correct, as of this moment in time.
I thought that money was used for repairs, more than, or a portion of it, Molly. Didn't you, you explained it to us last time. A portion of it was used for repairs and maintenance?
That's what we have been using it for, yes.
So now it's gonna be used for operating?
That, that's...
And that worries, well, it's not our budget to worry about.
That's what, that's what's...
Well, it is our budget to worry about.
Well, no, I mean the county's budget.
So, no, I'm not happy with that either. So I'm just...
Well, it concerns me from...
Turn it all around.
It concerns me some things that you shared, like if the roof needs replaced. Where's that money gonna come from? And that's what, I thought that was set up for how, but maybe I'm wrong.
That's for, it's a county building and that's gonna be for the county...
Figure out then.
To be worried about.
You're absolutely wrong.
Yeah, but I mean, it's not our budget. There's, that's the county, we don't have a vote in that one. They, that's theirs to handle. I was just asking for understanding, so...
I'm here to worry about this budget and what's going on with Tell City. And I'll have to worry about what's going on with the county when that comes along.
I, I understand.
I'm here for what's, the funding for Tell City.
So I think I'm very close to having it. Just, I need some clarity from the council. So, elections, phone system, Hagstrom Park restrooms. Everybody feel okay with Connie and I moving some of that around? Because you can't make a motion in this, this is a public hearing, so don't yay it or nay it or whatever. Just, I'm looking for a nod of a head or a conversation. Yeah, it's up to the council. They, if the council wants to give up their travel funds for the regional arts or whatever, that's, yeah, you guys can do that. That's an easy one to, for, I think Connie to figure out, because the ten thousand already is coming out of the general, right? For the shelter that you have?
No.
Oh, it's not?
Ten thousand's coming out of Q cap.
Okay, but you can use general for the shelter, right?
Yes, we do.
If you want this two thousand or whatever, if you need to make up to get that, to that forty-eight.
Yes, that two, well, it wouldn't be considered the regional arts or the historical society money because that is in riverboat.
Right.
It would be the two thousand from their mileage.
Right, you take out...
Would go towards animals.
Right, which is currently in general.
Which is in the general, yes.
So what's, I mean, everybody feel decent about that?
Do we have money to fix roads and potholes? Because we keep cutting street and alley.
It's gonna get close.
Remember when the streets were gravel?
I remember some of them.
I remember some too. That's what I'm saying. You can still, you can still travel. It's all right.
That's true.
So are we deciding we should go back to them?
We may have to though. I don't want to.
No, I think we've got this. But I get what you mean.
Well, I, I think we should, I, I, I just wanna, I wanna say something here. I'll probably get murdered about this, but, but I don't care. I'm serving as council. I try to make reasonable decisions. We need to explain why we're in this situation. In case you folks haven't read or heard about it, okay? The General Assembly, when they passed the budget bill, they allowed us, by putting a maximum cap on our levy of four percent, it should have been five point six percent if they would have used the old formula. They didn't. They arbitrarily capped it at four percent. That allows us, if I remember correctly, Connie, that allows us to raise approximately a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars of new funds in the general fund.
The four percent does, correct? It, it's approximately that.
Okay, so that's the amount of increase that we get, okay? Now, we have, we have no ability to pass a tax or increase taxes or anything like that, other than the wheel tax. We can't just go out and increase taxes to raise funds, okay? So anyway, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand increase. That same legislation that gave, including me and anybody that owns property, gave a three hundred dollar credit on property taxpayers, okay? That money then, the city, it's called a circuit breaker, okay? Where they give us money and they take back money. If you look, and I brought my property tax statement, just, just as an example, just as an example. If you look on a property tax statement that you get, which breaks all this down, at my, my house, for example, if I was taxed the full amount, this is for this year, twenty-five, I would be paying three thousand, four hundred and four dollars and sixty-six cents in property taxes, okay? But the state placed a cap on that. So instead of paying three thousand, four hundred and four dollars, I'm paying two thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars, okay? So my house, as an example, the hundred and twenty-nine thousand that they give the city, they're gonna take back a thousand dollars from my house. So our circuit breaker is increasing from six hundred and fifty thousand dollars currently...
Correct.
To a projected nine hundred...
Nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred thousand. Okay, so the amount of money that they're taking back, that we have to reduce our budget by, is two hundred and fifty thousand. And we get a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollar increase. We got a hundred and twenty thousand dollar gap downwards before we start the year. So that's the problem that we're faced with. Secondly, we operate, Tell City has operated for probably sixty years, the dispatch center, correct?
At least, yeah.
Okay. That's a county responsibility. And we tried to reach, we have a joint agreement with them. And they never did, the county never did approve their budget as what we requested. So I think currently for this year, we're what, a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars?
Since with August coming up, they're approximately, probably so, yes.
We bill, we bill the county for that. I mean, we pay the dispatchers, the eight dispatchers, which is the minimum number you need to run two shift, twelve-hour shifts, twenty-four seven. We pay the, their city employees and we pay everything out and then we send a monthly bill to the county. And they've been reimborsing, reimbursing us only a portion of that. And to date so far this year, we're about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar short. That's a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that Tell City taxpayers have supplemented and paid for operation of the dispatch center, which is a legal responsibility of the county. Next year, we've submitted a budget to them. Basically, the same amount, maybe a little bit of an increase. But the dispatch budget is made up with all salaries and fringe benefits for the employees. And again, they've only budgeted about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than what the budget is. Am I correct on that?
I don't recall their total number. Larry, Connie, I have it.
They budgeted, what I was told, and this has been a little while since I had gotten this from them, but at that time, they were budgeting six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Okay, and, and the bu, the budget, I think, is...
Nine fifty-three.
Nine fifty-three?
Nine fifty-three.
So there's a big gap there. So we got that gap next year. We've got that gap this year. Where's the money coming from? I have, I have the most respect for the operation of the animal shelter, believe it or not, Molly. I think you guys do a great job. My beef is not with the animal shelter. It's a county responsibility. And, and they are shirking that responsibility.
Can you sue them?
Pardon me?
Can you sue the county?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know.
Well, we, I mean, personally, if we didn't pay our bills, we'd be in trouble. Now, it sounds to me like the county's not paying their bills.
Anybody else have that? One thing I'm gonna read, then we'll go up on the topic. Okay, so I kinda wrote down my thoughts. I didn't wanna lose track. In researching some of these funding, I found some opportunities I don't know if River's Edge is aware of, but I'd like to share those with you as well. And I've got all that in here and all the information and who to contact to get it. So the responsibility of the animal shelter is often complex, involving a mix of tax dollars, private donations, grants, and fundraisers. I think we would all agree to that. While some may argue it's primarily a county responsibility, and I cannot find any state statute that says it's the county's financial responsibility. Now, if it's out there, show it to me. I'd gladly see it, but I cannot find it. But my focus is on ensuring the shelters continue operation, and we as a community must secure stable funding. Now, governmental contributions are ideal, but budget cuts means these funds are not always guaranteed. I think that's a fair statement. So this leads me to suggest that we, now this isn't Tell City as a we, this is we as a community, all right? I just wanna clarify that as I read this, so people are not mixing up my words. But we explore the possibility of an animal tax. Now, Jim, you've brought it up a dozen times, I bet, right? Over many years, an animal tax of some sort. Now, what that looks like, I don't know. But I want to be clear that I am not advocating for new taxes, but as evidenced in my stance with the wheel tax, right? That's something I didn't think was a good idea at that time, so... However, if we are serious about supporting the animal shelter and potentially in the future, an animal control officer, we need a thorough discussion and research in sustainability funding models. Funding the shelter is already a challenge, and adding an animal control officer would be extremely difficult under current financial structures. And I would commend River's Edge Animal Shelter, like Molly and Ann, for constantly going above and beyond their duties of rescuing animals. And, and I think that says a lot. How much, Molly, how great would it be if there was actually some type of a funding source that was out there, either a tax or something? Again, I don't know. That you didn't have to come into these councils, give a setup and the money to fund an animal control officer? You even had to go into these homes like you're doing, you and Ann and all your volunteers. You, you don't have, you shouldn't be doing that. And you know that, but you do it because you care, and that's, and I appreciate that. But this county would benefit from both of those. Imagine the good things that could come if we actually had a control officer. You could spend time doing other things. So, just wanna share that. I just, nobody likes it, so I'm just gonna throw that out there. The word tax, it's a dirty word, I know, but we love our animals in this community. For everybody who says we need this shelter and wants to support it, just think about that as an option. Don't just, I'm a little tax, I don't wanna pay any more taxes, cut this, cut that. Again, when there's so many cuts, you don't even cut so much for something else gets cut. And if there's some type of a formula in place that would cover it, politics is out of it, whatever you wanna call it or keep, say, it takes care of it, so... But while we're doing my research for this traditional funding, I discovered a thing called the Pet Friendly Services of Indiana. So you know those little license plates that people have that's got the little cat or dog on it? This is a valuable resource for shelters, and I noticed that River's Edge was not listed as supporting shelter of that. Ninety-eight side is. I did find that. They were on their list. So I did contact the Pet Friendly Services and they confirmed that River's Edge was not on their list, but expressed eagerness to add them. So I've got the email from this lady. She's ready for the phone call tomorrow to sign you up. But what does this organization do? This organization offers a list of over a hundred Indiana and national grant opportunities, many of which I feel could benefit River's Edge. Now, we'll say twenty-five of them, maybe thirty or so, are more specific towards a certain county or city, if you look on that list. And I've got a printout of them all here with the grant, how much it funds, you name it. It's a heck of a spreadsheet that's put together. But they also administrate a pet-friendly plate grant program, providing free or discounted spade and neuter coupons to five-oh-one C rescue groups and municipal shelters in Indiana. Furthermore, the website provides a menu for shelter maintenance, or excuse me, medicine, and the best practices from the Association of Shelter Veterinarians, and a guide to the standard care in animal shelters, often referred to as they call it the Bible for shelter standards. You may already have this, but I've printed it out for you if you want it, or I can email it to you. You can download it. It may give you guys some ideas that, hey, I didn't think of that. It's a great idea. But I just wanna share it. But they also highlight a program like SNAP Vets for limited income Hoosiers and community cat CC programs for feral and free-roaming cats. So there's fun, food that people could get for animals, maybe at a discount with that program, I think. So I highly recommend your visit to websites. Got a lot of amazing things on it. It, it's really, it's, it's unbelievable. And I Googled traditional funding. It was like the first thing that pulled up. So I'd love to help Molly get you set up with them. I, I don't know. Okay, so...
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
When you first started reading your letter, you said state statute. Could you re, read that part again?
I can't find anywhere in state statutes the county's responsible for funding it or city. I, I, or who is responsible? It didn't seem clear. I was just trying to research it and I couldn't, I was just, who was responsible for funding animal welfare in your community and shelters? And it just was all...
So all this saying that it's the county's responsibility, you can't find...
I can't find it's the county. I can't find it's the city. I can't find it. It's just open.
Who establishes the animal welfare board?
Here, you mean statewide or local?
Who establishes the county?
Well, the county would, but I don't know.
Animal welfare board.
I would say the county does. I didn't dig that deep.
The county did the animal welfare board.
Yeah. But I can't find where the shelter is, is, I, I mean, I was just, again, I'm still researching that. I was just, quick search.
Speak for that. One thing, I'm on the animal control board, okay? And yes, it's established, the county did establish the animal control board, and the issue is through the county. That's correct. All, so that, but our problem is, is we're getting, we're, our budgets have been cut. Also, you know, the animal control board can't do anything with also, without funds. So in fact, if you look, looked at the last meetings, the last two meetings, county council and the commissioners, I went forward them saying, I have a way, I think that we can fund, but I need to try to get a special fund for special things. And at the time, they were, they were thinking Humane Society, which I'm also now acting president again, that they should come up with a way to do these things, and we are, we are coming up with different ways to help. But the problem is, the county and the cities are very limited, and we, I understand that. And they, they, you know, everybody wants a piece of the pie, but everybody's gonna get a smaller piece of the pie, no matter what they want, because it comes from the state. The state has caused problems. I don't say caused problems, but what they've done is now put crimps on everybody else. So there is in the animal control ordinance, it actually states to the animal control board that they're, they can receive actual specific funds for specific purposes, and that goes into an account through the treasurer, but it will go through the auditor. In other words, if I could get the commissioners to agree to, to give me an account number, then I can create a special account and help the shelter or help the cat situation. But I'm, I've been working on it for almost three months now.
You're not answering his question, though. You're talking about something totally different. You're talking about something totally different, you know?
Okay, so I'm gonna just go on this a little bit.
But wait a minute, I just wanted to say that Pet Friendly Services, we've been using them for four years.
Yeah, you're part of it. I looked on, they had a list, about 300 groups. I thought, wow, I was, I was always curious where that money went, when you see those plates. I knew it went to animal care somewhere, but interesting to learn. So, regarding the, the city's past contributions, years ago, while I served on city council, we contributed approximately 16,000 to 18,000. And that was under the old shelter that had closed several years ago. But then it reopened in 2023 as Rivers Edge Animal Shelter. So, in '24, the city provided 24,000, and in '25, they provided 48,000. And for the initial '26 budget, 48 was allocated. However, on September 24th, the council unanimously voted to reduce the shelters to 10,000, finalize the 2026 budget for the state portal to be submitted. Nothing was in concrete at that time, but, but this decision, of course, followed by extensive discussion, and was made in light of unresolved funding between the city and the county regarding dispatch, which we've kinda talked about that a little bit. But moving forward, and this is where I kinda wanna reiterate some things. I observed a strong emotional response on social media, including some, now not all. There were some misrepresentations and even threats directed at elected officials. While I understand the heightened emotions, I will not tolerate these threats against myself, city council members, or anyone else, including everybody in this room. Using animals doesn't mean a punishment or illegally abandoning them to demonstrate a disregard for animal welfare. And, of course, we will pursue charges against anyone that would do that. You know, there were people that said some things on social media that I was very disappointed. There were comments made to mail animal feces to our homes. Is that acceptable? Animal feces, mail them to our houses?
They mail?
No, they made comments, people should do that. Nobody said, "No, that's a bad idea" on Facebook, actually. No, everybody just let that scroll on.
I didn't see that.
I've got screenshots. I'd be glad to share.
Well, I don't agree with, I mean, show me the screenshots. And here's the thing...
It's a horrible thing to do that to someone.
It is a horrible thing. It's an absolute horrible thing. I do not, I did not know that. This is news to me.
Yep.
I do not promote, will I promote violence, bullying, or any of the such to you all, to anyone, to the animals? That's not what this is about.
Amen.
But at the same time, I cannot control what people say on Facebook.
No, you can't.
Unfortunately, because I have since been a target of what you're describing as well. It's not just you.
And that's why I said all.
They're coming after me too, and my reputation, and my integrity, and what I do, and how I run the shelter. So, it's not just you all.
And that's right.
I receive it daily.
And that's why I said, "And all." You know, I was, I was just making that reference, because, but there was even a comment made to take stray cats and dogs and drop them off at our house.
Yeah, but they get that daily. Of, "You're not gonna take my cat, and I'm just gonna drop him off."
Right, but I mean, it, these are for people that I thought would have, for animal welfare, saying these comments, not just your normal citizen just going to do that. And it surprised me, but, and ironically, blew up one of my neighbors' calls, and he goes, "Well, we have a new cat in the neighborhood." So, I'm not saying that happened, but it's kinda ironic, don't you think? But I hope people who have the best interest of animals won't do that.
It's a problem, I, I mean, it's...
Yeah, I, I just don't think it's good to make threats to these, to the elected officials, and you guys too. I wish, that's the bad thing about social media.
It's hostile, often.
People use it as a bullying tool and can say some horrible things about people, and it's never a good thing. But regardless of that, I, I just wanna make that clear that I, I express people can make their comments. I, I agree, freedom of speech. But I don't necessarily think that's the right way to get things done by making threats to, to mail things to people's homes or abandon an animal, because the animal's already suffering. To be relocated in a stray neighborhood it's never been, is, this is bad on the animal. It's not solving the problem, it's creating a bigger one, so.
Well, I wanna say that there was no threats made by Rivers Edge Animal Shelter...
Right.
...to any council, to you. There was no threats that I was going to be dropping off animals. There was none of that.
Correct, and I agree.
My post that I made and my video clip was just the facts. There was no emotion, there was, it's just the facts, and that's what I'll continue to state.
Right, and I won't disagree with you. There was none of those comments made from Rivers Edge or employees or, that I, that I know. I didn't go stalk them all, you know, and find out exactly...
If you find, if you find one, I would love for you to...
Well, it wasn't you, I know that, or anybody that works for you, or anybody, I don't even know if they're even social, it's just a normal person out there that said it, and I hate it that they did it. It's just, that's not gonna make, it's only gonna make, put gas on the fire, I think, in some ways. But anyways, regardless of that, you know, you know, I understand Molly's, you know, disappointment. I, I do. You know, in the past, we had kind of a same situation last year about it, and I helped get the council up there, and they toured the shelter, and, and it all worked out in the end, like we hoped it would, and it did. You know, in the future, if this happens, Molly, I, I didn't have time to even reach out to you after it happened, hard, because I had a meeting, I was late for meetings up to that point. And before I knew it, it was on social media, and it just caught on fire, and it got out of hand in a lot of ways, I think. But we have worked, I think, to secure this funding that will take care of your needs that you've requested now for the 48, that will, should solve this problem that we, that we have. That's my goal. One question I do have, and you may be aware of this, you may not be, and I'm not picking on you, but I wanna make sure you're covered on this. So, I done some research about the, the Indiana State Board of Animal Health. And I couldn't, it requires that all shelters in Indiana be registered through them annually. And when I emailed Mr. Dennis to find out, because I got a list of all of them, your name's not on there, and I don't know, you might wanna get that on there, because it said it's required annually to fill that out?
They just started that.
Yeah, and '20, it said in July 1st of 2024, there's new legislation taking place, but I just don't want...
It's not 2024, it's this year.
Okay, well, it's, I'm just reading what it says, mandatory registration to effect July 1st, 2020. Okay, well, regardless, I hope, just, I don't wanna see anything happen, got you any problems. So, if you, if you need that guy's email, and, actually, I think you just go to the...
I'm taking care of it.
Okay, good, 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 good. And that's pretty much it. So, council, do you have any other comments? And I'm gonna go back to the floor, I wanna hear...
I just, I always wanna know what Jasper does in other third-class cities as far as animal shelter. I, I don't know, I, I was meaning to email Jasper, but as far as funding mechanisms...
I didn't get that far. Just had a lot of other things we've had to work on, projects, but yeah, I agree, it'd be nice to see. That's, I, I'm not sure how they're funded.
But I don't really like Jasper all that much.
Do you still love?
I've been coming all day.
I know, there's, there's Facebook later for me, thanks, Paul. Now I'll be getting pretzels out of my house.
I still, I support this, though.
Mayor, I, I, I do appreciate all the work that you've done on this, and I, I do...
I just need Connie help too, so.
But in an effort to share the facts and sticking with the facts, I've already stated, I appreciate the job that you guys do at the shelter, and I do, I mean that. You do a great job. But just, we're talking about $48,000 here from the city, okay? And the county's gonna put in maybe $60,000. Part of that 60,000 is approximately 12,000 a year they get from rental income. So, but just, just, just to set the record straight, we're talking about $48,000 from the city, okay? You guys will probably hate me for saying this, but I'm gonna say it, because I posted it at the time. Remember that $45 solid waste fee that the county had? Remember that? Everybody was so anxious to get rid of that. In 2023, was the last year that the county collected that $45 solid waste fee. That generated over $368,000 of revenue for the county. So, they didn't receive that in '24. They didn't receive that this year. Had they just left the $45 annual trash fee on, they would've had an additional $750,000. The county would've had that money to operate, okay? How they funded solid waste this year, I'm not sure about last year, is they took 200,000 out of the general fund. Now, you're talking about 48,000, and I'm talking about a million dollars between the general fund that they're now using to support solid waste and revenue that the county gave up. They could've funded your whole operation for 10 years, Molly. You know, that money's gone now, all right?
I mean, I understand what you're saying, Larry. But what do you, what do you want me to do? I'm dealing with...
I just want you to understand...
People could sit, the, the county can sit there and throw numbers out about waste in Tell City too.
I'm not saying they wasted money. I'm just saying they gave up.
Okay, well...
A million dollars of income.
There could be people sitting in the county that can throw numbers and saying that you all are throwing money as well. It, it can go back and forth.
Yeah, it could.
That's why we have to come, I'm here for the animal shelter.
I understand that.
That's why we have to come together so we can fund this. We're, we're going three years in, and I remember when we started this, you all were all for it. When, when you all wanted to get out of the inter-local agreement with the county, you all were all for it. You were, you were saying at that time, "What if we wanna give you more? What if we want to do additions for the building?" There's been none of that on your end. You've not funded more, you've taken funding away.
No, no, no.
No, you have.
We started up...
You said what you said to get out of the inter-local agreement.
It's public comment.
And it, it hasn't, so, we could go tit-for-tat, but things haven't played out as they've been told to me since day one. I'm here for the animal shelter to keep it open for our community, and I cannot do that with a funding of $10,000 from Tell City.
Well, Molly, I think we might've solved that solution right here.
At, at our expense, at the city's expense.
Yeah, but, you know, like I said, I couldn't find who was technically responsible in every community, and I think for me, and I have no vote necessarily in this budget part, but I think it's money well spent when it comes to the animal welfare side of this community, not just Tell City, but as a county, as a whole, as needs. I, I really do. I mean, if for some reason funding can't occur for the shelter, we're back to where we were two or three years ago, and I don't wanna go back to that. Do we have the perfect setup now at every moment? No. Financially, no. Do we, do we love to have better this and that? Yes. But I think we're getting the best bang for our buck that we can right now. I, I really do, I don't think we could do any better. So, I'm gonna allow, real quick, I don't want anybody to take the whole night, and we'll be here till nine o'clock, and I have to order dinner. But if anybody wants to come to the microphone for public comments, we would like, I'd like to give you all that opportunity to do that, knowing now that the council has this opportunity to, to fund it pretty easily if they, you know, give us, Connie and I have the nod to kinda do it. I think they kind of have, and so I feel like they have. So, public comments, if somebody's coming to the microphone, state your name and address, please, for the minutes, I'd appreciate it.
All right, good evening. So, Eric Martin, 77 Lehman Drive, I live in Larry's district. Here to talk about, obviously, the animal shelter, that's what we've been talking about all evening. Think it's important when you're making decisions, I don't sit in government, I sit in business, you look at a return on investment with quantifiable numbers. So, that's what we're gonna talk about here with me. So, if you look at the numbers, in 2024, 43 cats and 92 dogs were adopted. As of October 3rd of this year, 75 cats were adopted and 94 dogs. So, you can see that trend, right? So, we're gonna end the year at a much higher figure than last year, which shows that increasing public reliance on this critical service here. We talked about, you know, animal control officers. Obviously, if we're struggling to fund the shelter, that Derek's never getting an animal control shelter or officer to have to help with this. So, who do we rely upon? Molly and Ann, right? So, in '24, there was 10 large-scale cases, which are defined as like greater than three animals from the same home, which in that year was 80 animals out of 10 homes. In '25, we had eight large-scale cases with 57 animals. Well, if we don't have the shelter, who are you gonna call? You're not gonna call Derek, right? Like, we're not gonna call police officer to go get an animal. That's just not gonna happen. Another important thing, community service, right? So, the shelter is one of the few facilities that actually accepts community service hours, which is important for rehabilitation for our, our criminal public. Spay and neutering programs, not just the shelter animals that they obviously spay and neuter. 48 community animals were spayed and neutered, right? To limit that growth of the feral animals in the community. Educational opportunities, very important, right? So, local students from Perry County and Tell City could come and do internships if they're interested in animal health. I think that's a good opportunity to kinda get back to the youth. And then, obviously, they assess families in need. I did catch your comment, Chris, and always appreciate all the, all the research with the, with the funds, with the license plates. Obviously, most people know my cars, they have the license plates. So, that would be nice to have that funding go to the shelter. But I think, and I may have missed this, but if there was a requirement for it to be a municipal shelter, I don't believe Rivers Edge is.
No, they, well, they could be any according to...
I didn't catch that. But I did hear municipal shelter, which I know...
It can be, it can be several kinds. They have, they have, well, Humane Society, it's not a municipal necessarily. So, yeah, they can be.
Okay. Obviously, though, the shelter's not just a place to house animals. I think if we were to not fund them appropriately as a community, we're gonna, you know, restrict lots of activities to include, if we have great roads and sidewalks, that's outstanding. But if they're filled with cats and dogs, what are we gonna do?
So, the friendly program, sorry, yeah, located Indiana, so, rescue groups, 501(c)(3). So, I think there should be something, so...
Right, so that's good. But I do think we have to fund them. And I don't come to a lot of these events. Obviously, I don't like to, to get involved in the local politics and the theater, to your point, Chris. It's kinda crazy on Facebook. But I think this, when we're talking 48 grand out of a $5 million budget, to me, it's kinda comical that it have to come, and this community has to come for 48 grand. Like, we're talking a rounding error out of 5 million. So, in the future, it would be outstanding if we didn't have to have all the theater and get people riled up with the death threats and mailing feces, which is uncalled for and illegal. That's crazy.
Felony, for sure.
So, if we could just find a way, whether it's a tax or something else, to put in a fund where we can, you know, pay for the animal shelters without having to have Molly come beg for money for 48 grand.
And come up with a way for an animal control officer. That'd make her life a lot easier.
That would be great.
I'd, I'd love to have that.
But we're, now we're talking a much higher figure. You know, we're probably talking 100 fully burdened for that officer.
Well, it may not have to be a full-time, I don't know the ins and outs of a control officer, what the needs are. It may not be, that's for another meeting.
Right, but we're talking a much higher level of funding. But right now, if we can just keep the wheels on the bus, let's just get the animal shelter through, and then we can have our services. That's all I had for you, unless you guys wanna talk with me?
Did you ever get their cat out of the tree?
We did, we got it out with the ladder. Yeah, we, for those that don't know, we have a...
Everyone came together and...
We have a feral community cat problem, so we've been able to work with the shelter. So, my wife and I, we, whenever they get dropped off, we get them fixed, we feed them, because obviously, there's, we don't, we can't take them to the shelter because they're full. So, we just get them spayed and neutered, and more, to your point, Chris, more cats get dropped off, and it just becomes my problem.
And they may not get, they may just wander. I, I can't say, I know for sure they're dropped off, but it showed up.
I'm pretty, when, when we get new colors introduced, that's how I can tell, because they're all fixed.
I just can't imagine anybody ever doing that, because that's, in my heart, I could never do that. So, I mean, why would, I don't know. There's, there's not good people out there, I won't tell you, say that.
So, hopefully, next year, I don't have to see you guys, and fund the shelter, and we can go on our merry way. But thank you, guys.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We didn't catch your name, sir.
Eric Martin. 77 Lehman.
Thank you.
My first name is Stephen Kitchwell's name.
Any other comments?
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Bobby Oldham.
My name's Bobby Oldham, I live at 237 14th Street here in Tell City. I just want to do more of a remembrance. Back in the 80s, I'm a kid from the 70s and 80s, Cannleton had a horrible dog and cat population. The cops were actually charged with going around to all the neighborhoods and shooting animals in people's yards and the streets because they were destructing, tearing up the property, ripping open trash cans, and without the shelter and all the good work they do, and, you know, just getting the animals fixed, even just catch and release, we would have that all over again. So we desperately need to keep them going at all costs, or we very well could see that same thing in having, having to charge the police officers with going around and killing animals. And you know how devastating that was for me as a child, to watch the cops shoot at, my mom said, "No, you cannot shoot that dog." They went to neighbor to neighbor following that dog until they found a neighbor who would let them shoot it. And that's cruel, and I don't want to see that again. So I mean, if we can, I would love to see this keep going, you know? Anyway, I'm sorry, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I remember those days.
It was horrible.
Those were the bad old days.
I remember those days in Tell City.
Yeah.
I'll make this quick as I can.
Good to see you again. No, I just give you a hard time.
I love this place. I learn something, every time I come up here, I learn something. I mean, John Ford, 12th Street, number one, shut the pool down, oh come on, I mean, you're trying, I think you're playing a blame game, a shame game is what it is, a shame game. Don't take away somebody's telephones, don't take away somebody's mileage and stuff like that. I think, you know, I mean, like, I know while we're sitting in here, we had that economic development lady, I think Erin, that takes care of something like that, okay? Now, the county went with somebody different, and they were basically, you know, I listened to y'all, and you did not like the fact that the county done something that saved a whole lot of money, okay? And I mean, I think it was over $60,000 by going with a different economic development company, okay? I mean, that might not be the proper term of it, or whatever like that, but I mean, as far as that goes, just like tonight, you put things out for the lowest bid, but you didn't practice that with your economic, you stayed with the same person for the same price and everything like that. Now, if these people were more on a bid side, do you think they would work for you a little bit harder, you know? I mean, we could have saved a whole lot of money that would have done more than fund what they need, you know, that 60,000, I think, I think I might even be low-balling it, you know, just with that one watch what you spend bill or project, whatever you want to call it, you know, I mean, but you should have bid that out and see if you couldn't have done something better and saved the money to fund something that we do need desperately, okay? I really think it's a shame game that you're talking about, close the pool, oh, take away, you know, don't pay people for their mileage, you know, I really don't like that.
Well, they made, that was his own mileage, he said cut his, he wasn't...
Yeah.
That's his choice.
See, he's...
I don't make my drive. He's carrying.
No, I just, you know, I mean, I don't know what...
And the side of me, Ron.
I think Tell City probably has quite a high percentage. Do you keep up with the percentage of what's coming from Troy, Tell City, and Cannleton? Do you keep up with that? I mean, I mean, do we really, and number one, thank you for looking into the little license plate and everything like that, and any, thank you, I see you're trying, I really see you're trying, but playing a shame game with take away mileage, take away the pool, you know, I mean, I mean, that makes me feel bad there, you know, and I don't even go to the pool.
Well, I mean, I don't, I can't speak for Larry, but I mean, I appreciate, he may not be, he may not be the logical suggestion, but I think I can appreciate some, at least throwing ideas out there, whether they make sense or not, or what you want to do, to take time to actually say something and throw it out there, it means something too.
Well, you did show that you have tried and that you spent some time on it, I don't know what he meant by, what Mike, what is his, Mike? Said something about at the city's expense, you're figuring something out. I don't agree with that at all. He, I think you have an amazing amount of people up here with an amazing amount of intelligence and everything like that. You should be able to figure something out without taking away the pool from the kids, the telephones from the adults. I'm trying to get extra lines.
Would it make sense to pay a monthly bill for a fax line still?
What's that?
Would it make sense to pay for a fax line in this building?
Oh, no, oh, no.
Okay, that's the phone I'm getting.
That's a thousand dollars, you know, I mean...
I'm saving money, but I...
A thousand dollars here, a thousand dollars there. I'm talking about, you're overlooking something that you spent $60,000 on and just walked away and didn't think nothing of it. You know, we're talking about, you know, not taking care of the parks and recreation. That's gonna make this town look bad, you know, I mean, it's gonna make it look bad, you know, I mean, we got too many dogs and cats, that's gonna make it look bad too. But I'm just saying, you didn't follow, you didn't practice what you preach as far as doing a bid on your economic development, and I don't know if that's the name of it exactly or not, you know, I mean, but just by doing that one time, you could have saved all the money and more for what she needs and what they need, what we need, I should say what we need, okay? So, I mean, just, that's just one, that's just one example to where you, if you could put out a practice, a bid process or something like that, okay? Now, if a grant comes up, you know, to change the color of the signs of the streets and everything, I don't know how much we spent. How much did the city spend on...
We did it in-house. We actually did it in-house.
Okay, okay, I thought you did. I'm talking about something simple is that...
It saved a lot of money. I tried doing it, because there were areas not having signs, that wrong.
I know it's getting late, I've already vented. Number one, thank you for at least trying, okay, that shows that you do care, okay?
I care.
But number two, what we did tonight was a, was a bid process of the lowest bid, and that's something that you did not do in a couple of different cases that would have been much, much better on our, everybody's wallets, because what you're gonna do is you're gonna shut down this, you're gonna do this, you're gonna do that, then you're gonna say, "Well, we need more taxes."
Well, Ron, I could...
And I don't think it has anything to do with that $45, because number one, they cut taxes, but they're still making things happen, so hooray for them. You know, if they can cut taxes, I sure wish you could, trying to keep up with all the real estate and everything.
Hey, Ron, I'd be glad to sit down with you one-on-one and talk economic development and the reasons behind all of that one-on-one, because it would take, it would take a while, but I mean, I don't know.
I understand.
But I think if I sat down, you'd understand.
I try to make it short and sweet, whenever I come up here, you know, that, I don't really like coming up here, but I always do.
Oh, Ron, now you do.
But just at one, just at one time, if you would have practiced your bid process, you could have saved enough money, so I don't know how many others.
But you also get what you pay for.
Well...
Well, you do.
Sometimes...
The services you do.
Yeah, but they know their bidding.
You get what you pay for. Hey, I'm gonna spin off a Ron. Larry talks about Tell City residents paying double all the time, but with your economic development, you're paying triple, and...
How are we paying triple?
And you, the Tell City...
How are we paying, how are we paying triple?
The Tell City residents are carrying the full burden of PCDC. They're carrying the full burden because the county's not paying anything.
We're paying...
So you're paying double because you pay county tax and you pay a city tax, so you're paying double with RJL, and you're paying PCDC, you're paying that out of your city tax, so you're carrying that full burden, so essentially, you're paying triple.
Okay, how do you want, figure it out?
Why is that?
I'd be happy to go into that another time, this is a public hearing for the shelter part, but Molly...
I'm just, I'm just, I'm spinning off of his.
I could tell you 100 things, problems with that, that you've said, but I don't want to go into it tonight, because there's some things there that we weren't even brought to the table for. And you know I've yet to meet with RJL yet, they, I think I've not met them yet, not one time. They showed, they had a meeting scheduled, you know they were no-call, no-show? I had one today with them, which I had to cancel because I had some important things to come up this morning, I had to address, but that was my end there, but I notified them at least that I didn't have time to meet today. But before, they never showed up, had a meeting on book for over, what, two, three weeks? Found out, maybe two, three days later, you go, hey, didn't make the meeting. Does that sound like an economic development company I want to work with? I can call PCDC right now and she'd be here. They don't even live here. So I mean, I want to work with them, but they've got, I've got to have communication with them too, and I've not gotten that, I feel, yet.
And what, and all the new ideas they put in the paper, those are just duplications of what she was already working on, what she's been working on for years.
I think we're off topic, those guys.
So anyways, any other comments related to the shelter part or public hearing, the budget? Budget, public hearing, yeah.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made by Larry to close vote, and reconvene the city council meeting?
Yes.
Okay, second by Brian, all in favor, second by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Now, let's see, we are the committee and war reports, we'll start first with Larry Clement, Ward one.
Chris.
Do you want them to talk?
Do you want to do that?
What?
Discuss what, what changes...
Do you, oh, do you guys want, we can do that.
I mean, we need to do it sometime.
Okay, so council, before we move on, do you want to make those changes, the...
I'm sorry, I just...
What do you want to do about the $2,000? Do you want to reduce the travel budget for the council and leave the regional arts and historic places they are, or that's basically the only wibbering that's easiest to do, I think?
I'll make a motion, we'll go with your recommendations. That way, we can fully, we can give Molly her money.
$48,000.
$48,000, which we contributed this year. But I want everyone to know about what we've done with this budget, not a city employee's gonna get a dime raise next year.
That's the cost.
We cannot, we cannot give raises with the thin that we have. I'm not blaming you, don't get me wrong, I'm just saying overall...
I mean, I feel like that, that's a total blame.
No, it's not.
If you say that I'm...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, folks, I'm sorry.
The whole general budget.
The public hearing's over.
Nobody's getting a raise.
The public hearing is over.
Don't have the tax dollars, is my...
The public hearing is over, I'm sorry. The public hearing is over.
I'm not saying that, you misunderstood.
Molly, that was decided well before that.
That's not right.
That was decided well before.
You've already insulted me the last meeting, you're not gonna do it now.
No, that was decided well before that.
I'm just saying, by us adopting what we changed, there's no fat in our budget. Chief wanted raises, we couldn't do it for his dispatchers. Employees wanted raises, but that's because the state has cut our money. We don't have it, there is, there's no fat. We cut out stuff that we don't want to cut out to make it work, and it's only gonna get worse.
Okay, so...
Next year, it's...
Gerald, your motion.
I made a motion to approve it.
Well, the $2,000, what do you want to do on that? Is that the travel budget for the council?
He said your suggestion.
Or what I said, or the...
His motion was with our, the suggestions that we had on...
And then let us divide it up later, decide later the details?
No.
Right here.
He was, he was talking about the 1,000 reduction from regional arts, the 1,000 from historic places.
Okay, I just understood which...
Well, she's got to roll things out.
Okay, all right, so we got a motion made by Gerald, is there a second?
To do what?
To reduce the regional arts, the historic society, the elections, and the phone system, and the Haguenberg Park renovations.
Well, what about giving up the mileage?
You could do that.
And keeping...
That would be a different motion.
That'd be a motion that, the motion that Gerald has made is that motion.
All right. When can I make that motion? Can I make the motion now?
Well, is there a second to Gerald's? Let me ask that. Okay, dies. Now, is there a motion, another motion for what you're wanting to do, with the mileage?
Right.
Eliminate the $2,000 mileage allowance and then...
And that goes to the...
The 5,000 election, 9,500 phone system, 21,500 Haguenberg Park.
Okay.
I'll second it, I guess, yeah.
Okay, motion made by Mike, second by Philip, any further discussion? All of us in favor, second by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, good deal. One, one down, we got her solved. I'm glad, thank you, and a lot of you have already left, or some of you that go back and watch, thank you for your time and your patience.
Your budget's done.
Now, did we, did we do yours now?
No, his died for lack of a second.
Died for lack of a second.
If he didn't get a second, you know, vote on him. But, but you're fine. No, thank you for those who were here that already left, but your professionalism, your time tonight, and your passion for animals, I'm very appreciative of it, and I'm sure the rest is council, I can't speak for entirely, but I feel they feel the same, so.
Chris, I want to go back for a second. When Mike made his motion, was that just to reduce the $2,000 council travel, or did that include the attorney travel for 800?
I think we left the travel for 800 in there, I didn't bring that up again. We can address that later. I'm still more than happy to donate that back, we'll figure a mechanism.
We can make up, we can make a separate... I tell you what, do you want to make a separate motion then to reduce yours?
Just because it's in there doesn't mean it has to be spent.
That's exactly right. The only way it gets spent is if I file claims for it, and I know he's not gonna do it.
And he could tell us about it, maybe, I don't know.
Okay, I will come to you guys before I ask to spend that money.
I know what I'm gonna do, so.
All right, anything else, I'm gonna reel this in so we can get back on the task.
Thank you.
Little off here, but we're gonna get her back on. All right, so, are we ready for committee and war reports? We'll start with Ward one, Larry Clement.
Thank you, I'll make it quick. On September the 4th, I attended an open house for Lincoln Hills Development Corporation celebrating 60 years as an organization in this community, and I stopped by to congratulate them on that. September the 9th, I attended a tax abatement seminar in French Lecque that was hosted by Radius and sponsored by Baker Tilly, and I received, did Ron leave?
Yeah, stepped out.
I actually received my invitation from Erin Emerson at PCDC, and she invited me to attend, and she attended as well. It was a great workshop, and there's been a lot of changes to the tax abatement stuff, Mr. Attorney, that we need to be up with. It was a good workshop, though, and I appreciated the invitation from PCDC to attend. I also attended the Smart City presentation that was put on by Anna Island at the William Tell Center. I've attempted to enroll in that and have been unsuccessful at this point, but I will try again.
Yeah, that's...
Anjan will help you with it, he helped me.
Who?
Anjan will help.
Anjan will help you. He helped me.
Okay, well, when I went in, you know, it said they would send you an ID number to put in, I never could get the ID number, so.
Did you check your spam, maybe?
I don't know, I did it that same evening, and so I haven't come back.
That happens, forget it, hopefully you get it set up.
And I couldn't recall, I looked at my past sheets, and we did get Partner and Pride Awards last year for the month of October, but I was unsure whether we were doing it this year or not.
I don't think we have it for...
We, we discussed that it was close with decorating for Halloween, all the, all the holidays coming up, that we'd stop in September is what we talked about last year.
Okay, well, I, I picked somebody for September, but I'm sure I'll pick them next year, okay?
So, okay. Just probably going to give to you, Brian.
Okay, that concludes my report, thank you.
All right, Mike?
In Ward four, I was wanting to compliment all of the property owners, and even in the city, that, that participated in that and keep their property beautiful and upkept, groomed. Hard decision each month to pick out one that was better than the others. And also, I have to compliment the Little Tell City Strong Committee for pulling off that fall festival. It was phenomenal, really. I mean, it was a car show, that was the only thing that evidently the message didn't get out because the cars didn't show up. But other than that, the people did, and the kids enjoyed it, there was great, about six people, six people on that committee. That's, um...
They did a lot.
Yeah. Thank you, that's it.
Okay, Phillip Simpson?
Hey, um, nothing really, I do like the new sign, coming into town. I know it's been five years, maybe.
Five or six, it was pretty wore out, you couldn't even...
Yeah, it looks good, the first three or four, and then...
Yeah.
But that's okay, yeah, it looks good.
Paid for by a donor, so.
Really? Good, 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 that's all I got.
Okay, great. Brian, Steve?
I don't have all that much, I just want to thank all our city workers, they do one heck of a job, every department. I've, I've been out and about a little more the last month, and I've really seen a lot of them doing a lot of hard work. And it, it's just a shame we can't help them out this year, but hopefully next year, you know, maybe the state legislature will turn around and give us some more money.
Well, with Sarah Spinning goes, there's nothing that says we can't do any increases or stipends next year. Even, we can do an increase or a stipend in May if we want. We just got to make an amendment to the salary, it's doable. So, I'm not going to give up hope yet, give us, give us a little time to...
Well, I'm always got hope.
We'll try.
That's all I had, man.
All right, Joe?
I don't have any time.
All right, any statement or comments from the city attorney or the clerk treasurer?
I wouldn't dare use up any more of our time.
Okay.
No.
Okay, all right, then, thank you very much. We'll move on, then, old business, health insurance, Phillip, I know you want to add this to the agenda.
Yeah, I don't... I don't have much energy left, but I just, health insurance for city council, I was just going to motion tonight to not offer it to city councilman.
Okay, is that a motion then?
Uh, sure, yeah.
Okay, so it's a motion by Phillip for health insurance to what, not be offered to?
The city council.
City council.
To five of us.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion made second, any further discussion?
The health insurance doesn't cost anything if you don't use it.
That's right, so nobody's on it at this time.
It doesn't cost anything.
It does, it does, it will if someone accepts it.
Yeah.
We have to pay for it.
No.
No, you don't, you pay for about 10%.
We, we don't...
I think you're crossing each other here, Gerald, I think what Gerald's saying is, right now, it's not a cost because nobody's claiming it.
Right.
And what you're saying is that if somebody did, then it would be a cost.
Right.
Sorry, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for anybody, but I think that's kind of where, what I'm hearing from both sides.
And currently, I don't know who was the last person on it, I don't remember, but...
I think it's me.
You?
Yeah, because I was a business owner, and you can't go in Obamacare...
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
If you have...
I didn't know anybody currently, I didn't think about what I was talking about. So, without further discussion, but what Phillip's saying is, you know, currently, if no one is on it, and currently there isn't, no one on it, because you've all stated that, so I'm not violating any rules or whatever anyone would say. It ain't costing the taxpayers any money, but if one of you decide tomorrow, or all five of you decide tomorrow, you could, and it would cost. But if you're going to remove it, if nobody on it, now is the absolute best time to do it. Rather than take it away from someone that gets on it next month, that they would, and I'm not saying any of you have plans or would, I don't know your situations in life, but there's, that's, is that what you're trying to say? I'm sorry to...
Yeah.
Take, put words in your mouth.
Yeah, and before we vote, I'm going to ask for a point of order. It's my understanding that health insurance is considered part of the council's compensation, if they accept it. Am I correct? Does the statute defines health insurance or any fringe benefits?
Boy, I tell you what, Larry, I always tell folks, there's a reason I pay somebody else to do my taxes.
Okay.
I, I believe that is correct, I believe that the contribution would count as part of your income.
I think I may have...
It doesn't on my taxes, though.
I, well, if you were receiving it, I think the, the, the city contribution would count, I think. As I said, I pay somebody else to do my taxes, so take that for what it's worth.
The state statute determines, and I can't find it, I must thought I had it in here.
Of course, there's different definitions of everything, so, when it comes to taxes, and I don't know.
There are, that's, your accountants and all that good stuff.
Okay, let, let me read this out of our handbook, it's on page 185. This is the aim handbook, which...
It says the aim handbook, not the county handbook, correct? I mean, city.
This is the... 2024 Municipal Officials Handbook that we were given to the 2024 training, okay? On page 185, it says, "The legislature has defined compensation for elected officials as the total of all money paid to the elected officials for performing duties as an officer, regardless of the source of funds from which the money is paid, including all employee benefits paid to an elected official, including life insurance, health insurance, disability insurance, retirement benefits, and pension benefits. This compensation may not be reduced below the amount fixed for the previous year." That's my point of order, is that even though we're not currently participating, we are eligible to participate, and I don't believe that we can reduce it for this council.
But you can for next year, right?
That's what I was, I was going to say, it would have to be, it would have to be for the, based upon the way I understood what you read in the statute, you would not be able to reduce current year, it would have to apply the following year.
Right.
I'm sorry, Larry, I'd have to review that again, I apologize. I don't want to drag this issue out.
Right.
This did go before the Supreme Court, and they had Appeals Court, and the local court.
I don't think this was the issue that went there, though, this is...
Well, no, it was health insurance, it was the complete, they argued...
But I don't think it was the distinction that Larry's making, in that if you take away, it has to take effect the following year, is the way I understand it. And you only got a couple of months left.
You can't take it away the current year.
That's what I'm saying. That's the way I heard, the way I heard that statute, you would be able to take away.
Can't reduce the council's compensation below what they received the previous year.
Correct, yes.
And the council's compensation includes health insurance.
Well...
If you used it.
Yeah, no one's used it, so our compensation won't be reduced.
So if I apply for it tomorrow, do you...
Boy, guys, you're, you're, you're putting me in the tall weeds here. My brain's just not going to function right.
Okay, we just, someone bring, we'll listen to this minute, we have a motion that was made in second, okay? We're still at further discussion, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. We'll track what is going on here. Do you have any other comments before, I mean, we are going to vote?
Yeah, I do, I do about the Supreme Court decision. That was a split decision, by the way.
You go with the majority, though.
Let me read the, I won't read the entire eight pages of the dissenting judge's conclusion, uh, comments, but I will read his conclusion. Said, "From my reading of the relevant statutes, the legislature, the legislature intended local elected officials to be a separate category of employees from part-time and full-time employees for health insurance purposes, regardless of the number of hours they work." And then he sums it up, "Ultimately, the issue of health insurance coverage for local elected officials is an important policy issue, best left for the legislature to address." So, um...
So we've got a motion made second, and for what it's worth, I think at this point, it's a good opportunity to show the taxpayers that we are serious about our cuts, and that's just my thoughts. And if in the future, we have a sorbit amount of funds for some crazy reason, which I don't see happening, the council could consider it then, at that time. But I do think it's an opportunity that the council's not had in a while, when no one's on it, that's not going to, financially and health-wise, have an effect on, on someone. And I think that's the difference in the county, there was somebody on it, and that became a legal mess, and I don't want to see us getting that mess down the road, if somebody would get on it and then kick the can further down the street. That's just my thoughts for what it's worth.
County, they, they don't have it, do they?
They don't, they receive perf benefits now, retirement, they do get that.
Yeah, I knew they got retirement, I...
Now, we don't.
I don't understand that.
Well, it's supposed to be for full-time, I, that needs to be researched further, I think, I don't...
Oh, they do.
Yeah, they receive...
Yeah, they get retirement, we get nothing.
Yeah, they do. It's not much, my, I'm talking, I don't want to say dollars, but I'm talking like almost single dollars, it's that small. But it's still, that's not our, that's not our fight, that's theirs, but we're talking about what they benefit, that's what they have, but... So, motion made second, any further discussion? All those in favor, second by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, what did we hear here, I need to know who said no and yes.
Nay.
Nay on the three.
No, my, Brian?
I said, I want to get rid of it.
You're in favor, yea. Phillip?
Yea.
Mike?
No.
Larry?
No.
Okay. I don't know if this discussion's dead yet, but I think we'll see a little more come out of the, in the near future, so. Okay, moving on, under new business, I had a made agreement to animal shelter, this is basically extend for the next two to three months of the additional...
The last four months.
Four months, sorry.
This one closing out this year, this has nothing to do with what was just done in the budget.
Right, this is additional $12,000 that we said we would allocate in September, which the council already approved, and so we just need to get this, I'll get with Molly and get this signed, so, and just dig into the funding of it, I don't think that's going to be a problem, but just want it on paper, so. Same agreement, just a change in the, from the amount, or to $12,000 to finish out the year. Is there a motion to approve it? We already approved it, I guess, this is the agreement.
No, we haven't approved it.
You proved the funding, but now you got to prove the agreement.
Your funding's in the additional appropriation that's coming.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yet to come.
I didn't quite get into why.
Wasn't a motion of intent? Maybe it wasn't, if it's not, we'll talk about it, but sorry. All right, do we want to approve this agreement, then? Is there a motion?
I think the motion, if somebody wanted to make it, would be a motion to approve, subject to the appropriation that has yet to come. That way you legally can approve the word, approve the agreement contingent upon approving the appropriation.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Brian, is there a second?
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Phillip, any further discussion? All those in favor, second by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, good deal. All right, next item on the agenda is the ordinance vacating the alley. Jeff, you get, I've talked enough.
I will do this.
What's the ordinance number, though, Connie?
1228.
Thank you.
Twelve, that's 12-28, right?
No.
1228. 1228. Thank you. Just, I'm going to try to explain this as quickly as possible, everybody on the council's familiar with our project of acquiring right of way for the sidewalk along 12th Street. As part of the settlement of the final parcel, which is the 22212 LLC, it's Ohio Valley Towing. We reached a final agreement, they've signed all the documents, we've recorded all the documents, as part of that agreement, we are vacating the alleyway that is adjacent to the parcels that 222 LLC owns on both sides of that alleyway. It has never been a true alleyway, it has always been a back entrance to, what was it, A&amp;G?
A&amp;G, yeah.
When it went back in the days, it was A&amp;G, it was the back entrance off of the alleyway to the north on Washington Street. We are not vacating any of the portion prior to 22212 LLC. Typically, vacating alleys, we'd go before the plan commission first, but ultimately, adopting an ordinance to do it is, is the final appropriate step in the process. And because we negotiated this as part of a settlement agreement, we believe that the appropriate way to handle it tonight is simply adopt an ordinance to finalize our settlement, and then we will be completely done with all of our real estate acquisitions. So, that's the explanation of what we've got, if anyone wants to make a motion for the first reading, I will try to get through this as quickly as I possibly can.
Motion for first reading.
I'll second.
Motion made by Larry, second by Phillip, all those in favor, second by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, first reading, Jeff?
Ordinance number 1221, 1228?
Yes.
An ordinance vacating alleyways adjacent to lots 1 through 9, and lots 21 through 28, in block 139 of the city of Tell City. Whereas certain alleys more particularly described herein, adjacent to real estate in block 139 owned by 22212 LLC, were originally incorporated in the plot of the city of Tell City. And whereas said alleys adjacent to the real estate in block 139 owned by 22212 LLC were never developed as alleys, or have not been commonly used as such thoroughfares. And whereas the city of Tell City recently negotiated the purchase of certain real estate interests from 22212 LLC adjacent to Indiana State Road 66 as part of a project to construct a sidewalk along State Road 66 from Washington Street to William Tell Boulevard. And whereas said 22212 LLC wishes to vacate said alleys. And whereas, as part of the consideration for purchase of said real estate interests of 22212 LLC by the city of Tell City, the city of Tell City agreed to vacate said alleys. And whereas, because 22212 LLC is the owner of each of the adjacent lots, they have received appropriate notice regarding the petition to vacate said alleys, as have all interested utilities. And whereas, because the vacation of said alleys was negotiated by the city of Tell City and 22212 LLC as part of a real estate transaction related to the State Road 66 sidewalk project, it is not necessary that a petition to vacate the alley be brought before the Tell City Advisory Plan Commission. And whereas the common council of Tell City, Indiana, has determined that the vacation of said alleys is appropriate and in the best interest of the city of Tell City. And whereas the common council of the city of Tell City now finds that said alleys should be vacated. Now therefore be it, hereby ordained by the common council of Tell City, Indiana as follows. Section 1, the following described alleys be and hereby are vacated from and after the passage of this ordinance. The alley between lots 1 through 9 and lots 21 through 28 in block 139 of the city of Tell City. Section 2, this ordinance shall not affect the rights of any utilities to maintain their lines and appurtenances in the area of the alleys herein vacated. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are repealed. Section 4, within 30 days after the adoption of this ordinance, any aggrieved person may appeal the adoption of this ordinance in the Circuit Court of Perry County, Indiana, passed and adopted by the common council of the city of Tell City, Indiana, the 6th day of October, 2025.
Okay.
And it is still October 6th for a few hours.
I needed that in there, all right.
Editorial comment.
So you've had the first reading of ordinance number 1228, is a motion spinners for second, third, reading by title only?
Motion.
Motion made by Brian, is there a second? Second by Mike, any further discussion? All those in favor, second by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Jeff, second, third reading by title only?
Third, ordinance number 1228, an ordinance vacating alleyways adjacent to lots 1 through 9, and lots 21 through 28, in block 139 of the city of Tell City. Third reading, ordinance number 1228, an ordinance vacating alleyways adjacent to lots 1 through 9, and lots 21 through 28, in block 139 of the city of Tell City.
Okay, so council, you've had the first, second, third reading of ordinance number 1228, is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Motion made by Gerald, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian, any further discussion?
I ask one quick question.
Sure.
And if it's not appropriate, tell me. Are they paying, being paid anything additional for this right of way?
No.
Well, they are being paid...
But this is part of...
This is part of the settlement. In essence, what we did is bargain away some of the money they were going to be paid, they agreed to a reduced amount in exchange for this.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so, all those in favor, second by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on, item C, let's see, here we go, additional appropriations, so Connie, do you want me to drive that, or you want to?
I'll go for it.
Me?
Yeah.
Of course you would, I'll save the resolution for you.
I'll do the transfer.
You do the what?
I'll do the transfer.
You do the transfers, okay, sorry. All right, notice the taxpayers of additional appropriations. Notice by, given the tax rate of city of Tell City, Perry County, Indiana, that the proper legal officers will consider the following additional appropriations in excess of the budget for the current year during the meeting at 6:00 PM on the 6th day of October, 2025. City General Fund Pool Utilities, $34,000, Animal Shelter, $12,000, total of the general fund, $46,000. Local law enforcement, local law enforcement equipment, $7,000, local law enforcement fund, $7,000. Lower Public Safety Fund, lower police officers' vests, $14,500, total lower, total lower Public Safety Fund, $14,500. Opioid Settlement Unrestricted Fund Equipment, $147.20, total opioid settlement unrestricted fund, $147.20. Opioid Settlement Restricted Fund Equipment, $2,681.62, total opioid settlement restricted fund, $2,681.62. Taxpayers, appearing this meeting, have the right to be heard, and additional appropriations are final made will be referenced in the Department of Local Government Finance, the DLGF, the DLGF will have their...
Who is he reading?
What?
Oh, you don't need to read that part.
Okay, well, whatever.
Sorry, that's just what's advertised in the paper.
I was just going, Connie.
Once he got going, he rolled.
I was just...
No, I didn't do it, Connie.
I was just... You can, now have a sentence now. All right, so, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Larry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, any further discussion? All those in favor, second by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. It was Larry, Mike, Larry.
Okay, my part passes down to you all sign.
Sorry, I'm not going to sign it. You put it out there already, I heard what I was going to say. All right, so, new business, item D is the transfers, all right, so Connie, that's you.
That's me.
What's this resolution number?
This resolution is 2025-17. It's a resolution by the Tell City Common Council to make necessary transfers between classifications within the general budget. City General Fund within the pool budget, we're asking for a transfer of $3,560 from repairs, building, equipment, and pools to operating supplies, and also $8,800 from pool salaries to utilities within the pool budget. Then we're asking for $6,800 from repair of old sets of buildings to cemetery, additional labor within the cemetery budget. And within the Tell City Depot Fund, we are asking for $600 to be from repair and maintenance to supplies. And that would be adopted this 6th day of October.
Okay, so council resolution requires one reading. Is there a motion to approve? Well, not everybody all at once.
Motion approved.
Okay, Larry, or motion made by Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, that does conclude new business. Our mayor's report. I did report in the Board of Works that I did reappoint Donna Nance to the Tell City Housing, or Tell City Electric Board. She was the only one that did submit a letter of interest. She's currently serving there now, and I think Donna, being part with the housing authority, she manages several hundred, you know, units, you could say, throughout the city. And I think she brings a good, a lot of knowledge and good eye to the Tell City Electric Board, so. That's all I have.
Before we leave, I want to clarify.
Mayor's report, okay.
Before she got upset, I was trying to explain, there's no fat in this budget. It had nothing to do with their additional $48,000 today. We'd already decided that a week or two ago. It would be no raises. To say that was totally out of line. And all I was saying is to the general public, there is no fat in this budget. We would love to give raises. We would love not to cut our street and road money. We'd love to do this and this, but we don't have. Given her the other, we would want to give her 10, the other 38. Had nothing to do with employees getting raises. That's already been decided, but before I could explain myself, she went out the door. So the people listening, that's the way it is.
And I'm confused. Did we ever act on Chris's recommendations? Or are you just?
You did, subject to the appropriation.
No, we changed. We changed it.
Yes.
We redo, we, when it, if Mike made the motion and Phillip second, I believe, for the, you're talking about the $2,000?
You made the. I'm talking about the whole list of stuff that you.
Yeah, we changed.
Yeah, we did that. Yeah, you did.
You voted on that?
Because he's, he made that motion to the list the way it was, no second. And then Mike, and Mike made a motion.